In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2024, and was posted at Borough Hall's website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. By exits to the right and the left of council chambers. Diane, can you lead us in the pleasurable legion?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Paulson, Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
He's absent tonight.
Councilman Houston.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Yeah.
Borough Administrator Rivera.
Yeah, I think you missed our turn on the other side. Councilman Hale.
Councilman Hale.
Oh, no, she's got us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stephanie, I'm sorry. Sorry, I meant to throw it off.
So before we begin. Our Borough Attorney has an announcement to make before we get the meeting started.
Hi, everyone. We wanted to set some ground rules, just so everyone's on the same page. Once the council people have gone through their agenda and each of the council individuals have stated what the discussion items are, they're going to be a few opportunities for the public to speak. When the public comes up and speaks, we are going to then close when everyone's finished, we're going to close the public portion, and then at that juncture, then the governing body will respond to the answers that we do have. But we want to create a forum where everyone gets to speak and that there isn't an opportunity where people are also interrupting each other. And we just want to just keep some decorum. If in the event somebody is out of order, I want everybody to know that the mayor runs this meeting. So she was going to pound her gavel, it's going to be a point of order, and we're all going to settle down and she's going to direct and who's to speak next. Thank you so much.
Council reports. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those of you at home, my name is Matt Hale and I chair the Economics Development Council Committee. So while I've lived in New Jersey for a really, really long time, I want everybody to know that I actually grew up in Southern California, where every spring we celebrated the return of the swallows to San Juan Capistrano. What is little known is that Highland Park actually has several springtime returns that are rituals of our own. So I want to announce a number of those today or remind people of those. The first one is the return of the flock of Vio scooters. So our scooters have been on their winter break for quite a winter hibernation, but you are going to see more and more Vio scooters flocking around town. So I hope everybody can please remember that in the initial stages, you're more likely to see scooters out and about and often in odd places. This is because new inexperienced scooter riders need to be reminded to bring the scooters back to the group parking spots and enclosures in and around town. And then also in addition to scooter wranglers from Vio will need some time to fully staff up and to analyze the migratory patterns of the scooters so they can come and pick up the strays that are placed up and around town. We'll be working with both riders and scooters and wranglers to manage the flock in the best, most safe and economical way that we can. But it's great to have them back and we're really excited to have riders for the spring and summer seasons. So in addition to the scooter flock, we have two additional seasonal species that are coming out of their winter hibernation, Blend Smoothies and Dairy Deluxe Ice Cream. We're both now open after winter hibernation and looking to be fed by local residents. So thank you to all the people who have already gone in the last few days to help these beloved seasonal businesses start up their spring and summer with a bang. We've seen fairly long lines at both of them, and so thank you very much for bringing micromedial nourishment to blends and dairy delights. In the next few weeks, we're going to have some new species join our flock. Giddy's Pizza Cafe is going to be open for takeout this week, but they should be fully serving all of your kosher pizza and cafe needs in the next couple of weeks. We also expect later in the summer, we'll see how an exciting return of Highland Pizza back to Highland Park. Our Economic Environment Team says it looks like they're coming back with an expanded and improved menu options, as well as some significant growth in outdoor seating sections. Lastly, we would also are tracking the arrival of yet another species, Highland Park. It's called Super Fresh, and we're seeing it and from seeing it in other natural habitats, it's an absolutely beautiful creature, which I know many of you are going to enjoy visiting on a regular basis. You'll notice that on tonight's agenda, we're introducing our first reading about a variety of incentives and inducements that we'll be having in order to bring the Super Fresh to Highland Park. Again, this is just the first reading for tonight, but we knew we were going to do this for quite some time, so it's nice to see that is happening. Lots of places have been vying for Super Fresh, so it's nice that they've been attracted to Highland Park's environment. It does look like we aren't going to be able to see them until about Labor Day, the first sighting of Super Fresh. This is because the habitat enclosure where the Super Fresh will be located is undergoing a $6 million soup-to-nuts renovation, and that's taking a lot longer than expected. So it'll certainly be worth it to have this creature in Highland Park. Also, I wanted to point out another agenda item tonight. We're going to adopt the implementation plan for the third year of the Neighborhood Preservation Program. As you might recall, the MVP is in a slightly different habitat up on Woodbridge Avenue, but we're hoping that the programs and grants that are offering this year to the Woodbridge Avenue ecosystem, things like online marketing help for the businesses, expanded facade brands, and a homeowner report to improvement grant process will bring more and more people to shop and up on Woodbridge Avenue. We've already seen the newest Woodbridge Avenue species, the Freshmark Convenience Store, it's moved into its micro habitat in the abandoned property. I was able to take a look at that the other day, and it looks like it's really going to thrive there. Finally, the last spring renewals are two that have long and stable species that have been in Highland Park for a long time. The Farmers Market is gently spreading its wings on Friday afternoons from 11:00 to 4:00. It slowly grows and gathers strength in the early spring. Our experts at Main Street Highland Park expect that it's going to reach full size and full plumage in April when visiting hours will be scanning. So please have an opportunity to go and see the Farmers Market. And then, of course, we have the annual return of the 5K Run and the Arts in the Park. That's a one-day event that happens in May fifth. It's a very, kind of like a phoenix, but it is a wonderful event. So please mark your calendars to go run and walk and join the May fifth Arts in the Park. So lots of exciting things coming out of hibernation. I hope everybody comes out of your own hibernation and helps with the feeding and carrying of these swine businesses. And thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you for the glowing report. Councilmember Canavera.
Yes, thank you. Fore Health is working with the chief and the police department to do a presentation on proper gun storage. More information is to come on that event. The Commission for Urban Access has many members who are working with many cultural and educational institutes throughout the state to help make them more accessible to all citizens around New Jersey. So we're very proud of those members for doing that. The community food pantry is open on the second and fourth Thursday from 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM, and again, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and Saturdays following the Thursday from 9:30 AM to 10:00 AM. A Highland Park Gives a Hoot Food Pantry is every Tuesday at the Zone Six Center from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Both programs have seen a big increase in families needing their services. Join the Human Relations Commission as they kick off the community-wide incentive gratitude tree project. This will be on March 27th. It's a project to foster a culture of thankfulness and appreciation within our community, adorning a tree mural with messages of gratitude and peace. The presentation will also be followed by a seed planting activity to symbolize hope and new beginnings. It should be very fun for people of all ages. For more information, email islandparkhrc@gmail.com. The Mental Health Commission would like everyone to know that March is Self-Harm Awareness Month. Sadly, many people engage in self-harming behaviors. Self-harming involves injuring oneself by actions like cutting, burning, kicking at wounds, pulling out hair, or inflicting bruises. However, self-care can also refer to other behaviors that might endanger someone's health and safety, such as consuming alcohol and substances, engaging in dangerous activities, or neglecting one's physical or emotional needs. Key signs to notice include physical injuries. Feel free to get may see cuts, bruises, burns. People will change their appearance and wear different clothing to try and cover up where they're harming themselves. Unusual excuses for why they're injured and changes in their behavior. If you or anybody you know is self-harming, you can call either the lifeline at 988 or the self-harm hotline at 1-800-DON'T-CUT. Free support is available 24/7. Lastly, it's National Social Work Month, and I want to thank the Full House, the Borough Social Worker, who goes above and beyond every day for all of our residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone who is listening. Councilman Phil George. I chair the Public Safety Committee. Just a brief report, Mayor. For the police departments, a reminder, March 27th is the kite making and decorating event from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the community center. Everyone's invited to share some springtime crafting and enjoyment. For the library, excuse me. Today, the days for roof replacement projects were open and subject to review by the Borough Engineer and Borough Council. We'll be able to award that contract to the selected there. The Executive Director advised me last night at the Board of Trustees meeting. We're still on track to open around June. The bid specs for the substantial upgrades and installations through the generous customer estate grant have been prepared, and that process should begin very shortly. The work is being coordinated with the construction and roof replacement projects to make that work completion line all come out at the same time in June. The library's online lending app had some difficulties recently, but as of yesterday afternoon, it's back up and staff reports it's working much better than it did before. It should be noted that it's a good sign because when that app went down, the complaints came in so rapidly that we knew people use it and they use it all the time and they use it every day. It came right back up, and even the Board of Trustees thought that in some ways was good news that so many people were actually using it at the moment that it went down and they called in. The library is doing a project that was suggested by Councilman Houston to map out the location of all the mini libraries in town. At the Board of Trustees meeting last night, one trustee mentioned that there's an older map, a watercolor map floating around that shows the location of some of the little mini libraries at people's street corners. So if you know of one, send me an email at philgeorge@hpborough.com. Include a picture and a short comment if you wish, including whether you've taken a book, put in a book, or what you feel about it, and the library will put that out sometime in the next couple of months. We're looking at a deadline of around April 15, so if you would catch your information out in the next month, we'll put that together. Finally, with the fire department, the crew was trained Saturday on the new engine. We don't have the license plate yet, so I'm disappointed about my ride. However, the fire department has also received a grant of $27,000 through the American Rescue Firefighter Grants Program for eight sets of turnout gear and five pairs of boots for our firefighters. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. For everyone here at home, I'm Jason Stelnic. I chair the Recreation and Arts Committee. So I'm going to start off my report with a brief reminder of the important service provided by the Department of Community Services, which is that they have grocery transportation and online food shopping assistance. Community help in those areas, please reach out to the Fine Stat Community Center. Next up, I have a couple of community center programming highlights. First up is that there's free tax prep available at the community center every Tuesday now through April 14. You get your taxes prepared by IRS certified volunteers. Please note the program is limited to individuals and incomes up to $70,000, and appointments are required. To make an appointment, please reach out to the community center. A little later on, we also, in the month, we're going to have a community behavioral health event on Tuesday, March 26th, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM, also at the community center. There will be resources and presentations. The event is open to all. Visit the community center webpage or call for more information. Early next month, we have an AARP Safe Drive Report Course offered on Monday, April 1st, and Monday, April 8th. This too is open to all. Visit the community center website or call for more information. And then in mid-April, we'll have a spring luncheon on Tuesday, April 16th, at the community center, and that will start anew. Moving on, a couple of recreation programming highlights. Some of you will notice that Summer Camp Regulations are open. Theater Camp is already full, so that one is filled up, but the other camps are still open for registration if anyone is interested. We're going to be, also, have a few new youth programs this spring, namely the new tennis and chess programs for the youth. Lastly, a couple of Arts Commission updates. The Arts Commission, the Human Relations Commission, are teaming up to hold a special windows of understanding event, which is a table of understanding that's going to be focused on a few security issues. It will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, March 20th through 4:00 PM, and it'll be at the LinaCon at 137, 139 Raritan. And lastly, there will be a couple of book art workshops by the Arts Commission. Those will be held on Sunday, April 7th, from 2:00 to 4:30 PM, and Wednesday, April 17th, a very important day, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM at the community center. On the April 7th event, the project will be a somewhat important book project. So now, bring sewing needles if you have. All of your materials will be provided. And then on April 17th, there is an accordion play at the Book Project, and all materials will be provided, but you may want to bring some collage elements to populate the book. If you're interested in either or both of these book workshops, please sign up in advance by emailing instructor apollak@apollak139@gmail.com. That's A-P-O-L-L-A-C-K-139@Gmail.com. And that's my report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Attorney Shaw.
I have nothing, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mayor. You report today. Borough Administrator Shaw.
No, I'm quite the same, you know.
Okay, I have a brief report. Today, I had a meeting with the Attorney General, mayors from Middlesex County, and police chief, and the meeting was about the growing concerns of home burglaries or theft, and what is the Attorney General Office going to do about curbing this new wave that we are all seeing and we're all very much concerned with. So this was basically the meeting that we have. They told us, stay tuned. We had a lot of questions about keeping everyone safe and what kind of safety measures are they going to put in place or possible changes to the law to ensure that we're safe? Because we see creeping around in neighborhoods across the state where people are breaking into homes and they're stealing cars or there's auto theft or home invasion. And so it was very important that we went to this meeting today and lent our voice about the concerns that we have about safety for everyone. They also wrote that they were also talking about a new technology that they have, which is called the LPR Reader. And this is something that we have been doing in Highland Park for years, which is called a license plate reader. This is something that the state is giving out to just about every police department. And the effort of that is to, if there's a car that's stolen on any of the thoroughways in the state, that any car that is driving around that is stolen, that the license plate reader and the police have on their desk, we'd be able to pick up that information and hopefully stop some of these contests that we are seeing. So they rolled that out and that they rolled it out across the state. So I'm hoping that would be a tool that will help to curb some of the auto thefts that we all have been seeing. I will provide more updates as soon as I get more from the Attorney General's office. Also, today was your senior luncheon, and they celebrated St. Patrick's Day, and it was good. They had their corned beef and cabbage, and it was a good event, and I was able to spend a little bit of time with them to update them on some of the items that you all heard discussed here today, this evening. So that was good. I am pleased to announce that this past Sunday, there were 88 residents that attended the project for the Heart Partners Grant at the community center. This year, the number was low, and you may ask, why so low? Well, we had strong competition at the high school because Footloose, the performance of Footloose by our amazing Highland Park High School student was in session, and most people went up to go there. I also went. It was pretty amazing. Those kids are awesome. So with that said, we gave out five different grants. We gave out grants in the following category: arts, and Who's My Neighbor Inc., wall art, and a project for Who My Neighbor was awarded a grant. The environmental category was a native plant and garden and sustain of Highland Park. They received a grant. Another category for safety, the Universal Access Health and Wellness Program received a grant, and also a grant was given for the social wellness for elderly persons. And that was a grant that was given to the Chinese Association because they did a awesome program with the seniors last year. For the past few years, they have been doing some wonderful work with seniors, so I was happy to see that grant. And then there was one that went to the Human Relations Commission, and it's called the Unity Tree. And that, we're going to see some more things coming out of Jason's, no, Tara's department, and she's reported on it tonight about the project that's coming. And I would strongly suggest that everyone get engaged in this because I'm going to see all the things that we're all grateful for because there's a lot to be grateful for. So I was happy to see the HR received that grant. And last but not least, the Highland Park Student Class or Club for the Prong, Prong for All, they also received a grant, and that was the mayor's teen council project. They want to make sure that all students have an opportunity to attend the prong this year. So that was really awesome. That is my report. Oh, one more thing I wanted to add to Councilmember Hale's report, that Super Fresh has also agreed that they would help to sponsor the 5K Race and Arts in the Park. So they are not even here yet, but they're getting involved, and they want to show that they support our town, so that's an awesome thing. Okay. And now it's time for public discussion. Three minutes limited to items on the agenda. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by members attending on Zoom. And remember, we will listen to everything that you have to say, and then we'll respond later. Please state your name and address.
Mrs. Hall.
It is. You just got to move closer.
Oh, okay. Mary, of course, for 317 Denison Street. I have to say, I'm kind of surprised that there aren't more people here about the pilot agreement that is on our first reading. Because I'm actually pretty concerned about the pilots that Highland Park was talking about. We did one for Frederick for $100,000. If they were taxed regularly, they'd be paying over $800,000 in taxes. And I'm curious about the relationship between Highland Park and Middlesex, Super Fresh and Middlesex, and the Super Fresh and Highland Park. It seems like they make up the same developers, but I'm not sure. That's not really clear. I'd like someone to kind of respond to that. I'd like somebody with some knowledge about what happened in Middlesex, which opened in December, and then that supermarket area was sold for $8.8 million in January, February of this year. So you see something like that happening in Highland Park that, you know, the developer could walk away with money. And another question was, I don't know if any of you remember this, but I can't remember. I think New Brunswick had a Super Fresh grocery store in downtown New Brunswick that's right next to where the Heelots is going in. That only lasted a few years. And I'm a little concerned that we're giving away a lot of tax revenue. We've given away a lot from Frederick, and you've got what, six or eight other potential pilot areas that you can give away tax revenues on. And I'd like some kind of like financial analysis of what the future Highland Park is. If all of these redevelopment areas get redeveloped, and we give everybody a pilot because you've set the example that we're going to get, and there will probably be a lot more. And I guess that's it for now. I actually have a question about, not something to do with the pilot, but with Oprah. I saw each one of you had emailed asking you not to support the changes that are being proposed in Trenton over Oprah, and nobody bothered to respond. But I'd like to know what position you are all taking on the changes to the Oprah Law.
Hi, I'm Jessica Marusko, 216 South Third Avenue. I have two questions. The first is also the link to the pilot. I understand why we did a pilot arrangement with the supermarket. I absolutely understand that. But I'm just curious, is this the same owner that is now operating under the name DL Urban Renewal LLC? Is this the same owner landlord that had the Stop &amp; Shop property? And if so, have they changed their name? And then my second question is related to the pilot funds. And does the borough intend to initiate a specific agreement with the public schools to ensure that they get a portion of the annual service charge that is collected by the pilot? I understand 95% is coming to the township and 5% is going to the county. Those are my two questions.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hannah Schostag, 146 North Sixth Avenue. I have a couple of questions about the supermarket situation. Of course, we all want to succeed, goes without saying, but we have to be realistic. Supermarkets don't always take off like the one in New Brunswick. So my first question is, what happens if the supermarket fails? I realize that there has to be an urban entity in order to be able to qualify for the tax abatement. But the question is, if it did fail, would the next tenant have to be a supermarket? What are the criteria for getting the pilot if subsequently it fails and the property is empty and then we have to find somebody else for the property? So I understand that they have to be an urban renewal entity, but beyond that, do they have to be a supermarket? Second, are we talking about the revenue allocation bonds? Is that part of what's on the table as well? Because if so, my question is what municipality's exposure is with regard to the revenue allocation bonds? And again, especially if the supermarket fails, what is our obligation? Is there any clawback provision? We're only getting a 2% increase per year. If, on the other hand, as well as successful, are we only getting a 2% increase per year for the whole life of the abatement? So the question is, there, is there any room for increasing the per-year increase, rather, if they're making a lot of money on it, on the other hand? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Siegel. I am a property owner in town. I own three properties over on Fourth Avenue, Denison Street, and also on Wayne. But I'm going to talk a little bit about a different subject than what's been talked about this evening. And I'm talking about the issues of 20, about three, four years ago, you guys hit us with a 20% approximately increase in orders. You then hit us recently with a tax increase. One of my properties went up over 30%. That hurt personally because I was in mid lease and hadn't been able to account for that, anticipating. That hurt personally because I was in mid lease and hadn't been able to account for that, not anticipating a thirty percent increase in taxes. Then you had somewhere in all that rent control they put in. And then we're all aware of the uh ongoing insurance issue in the state. And then we also have now this water meter situation that's gone on in town. And that's what brings me here this evening. Okay. Recently, uh, the town notified the property owners in town after everything I just laid out for you. And they said, well, we want new water meters in town. And I respect that. We want a new way of measuring water, new way of reading the meters, and then hopefully we'll save costs. And then lo and behold, I get a bill in the mail for almost six thousand dollars because you said that the meter in my, one of my properties was incorrect. I said, well, how can that be? You've been coming to read the meter. I have no way of knowing whether that meter was, was that water that was used was as a result of a previous owner. But now I'm left to pay for a six thousand dollar bill. Councilman, you talked about inducements and I respect that.
Point, point of order, sir. You only have to have all your questions directed to the mayor and not to any specific council people. Thank you so much.
I make a comment to a, a statement.
Sir, I understand that. We just want to keep some decorum. Please follow the rules. Thank you.
Okay. Comments were made this evening about inducements for business. Well, how about an inducement for property owners in this town? It seems though, everybody seems to think property owners make a lot of money, when in fact, most of us use this as a sideline uh to maybe just as an investment tool. Not making much money, paying large mortgages. Older homes need lots of love, need lots of care. You start taking away too much money, which you have over the last four or five years. Now property values are gonna start to look. I've been in this town.
Very sad.
I've been in this town since approximately March sixteenth, two thousand and one. And I've lived here for five years. I've seen this town wither, not grow, but wither, despite all the comments in this room this evening. I've, I've seen a deprivation of what's going on in Main Street. And I've seen some of the changes in the housing in this town. I don't think this council is understanding what it takes for property owners, renters, and we have a large number of landlords in town to maintain their properties, to provide satisfactory housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Harper Street. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment on a different topic. I saw that there's two people being appointed to the Public Information Committee. Um, I know one of them, she's great. I think that's wonderful. Um, I just wanted to mention that I think public information is incredibly important. It really needs a focus. Um, I, I served on that committee and honestly, it was um hard to feel like we could make an impact. And I really want to see, you know, this, this skill and talent that I know some of the people have actually be used. And uh, you know, I know it's super hard to reach all of the communities we have. We have a very diverse town. Um, uh, absolutely, but I, I would love to see kind of some of these professional talents that we have who are volunteering their time have a little more impact on some of the communications. Um, you know, I'd love to see some communications that in different languages. We have a really big Asian population and I just think there's a lot that could be done there and I hope that that um that committee can really be tapped and, and maybe used a little bit more than I've seen it used in the past. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, I have a hand up and I have three attendees. Uh, Jessica Hudson, you could just state your name and address for record, please.
Hi, um, this is Jessica Hudson and I'm on Green Street. Um, I also want to talk a little bit about and ask a couple of questions about the um tax, a long-term tax exemption um for the supermarket. So according to the municipal tax abatement handbook, long-term tax exemptions incentivize private developers to invest in the development of a property or a area of a municipality in a may, in a manner that may not economically via, be viable without a financial incentive. So I agree with some of the others who have said that it seems like um, a grocery store is uh something of utmost importance. I think we all agree how critical that is. But the handbook also indicates that munat- municipalities should use the, use the pilot financial agreement forecast spreadsheet tool to evaluate the net cost to the municipality of any given pilot scenario to ensure taxpayers are not unduly burdened by offsetting the subsidy through their own tax dollars. So I have two questions. My first question is, has the municipality utilized the pilot financial agreement forecast spreadsheet to evaluate the net cost to the borough? And then my second question is, tax records indicate that the owners of this property have paid a hundred and twenty thousand approximately in twenty twenty-two, a hundred thousand in twenty twenty-three, and about fifty thousand in the first two quarters of twenty twenty-four. How much does the borough anticipate receiving from D L Urban Renewal LLC annually in property taxes and or annual service charges? And how does this compare to past tax revenue received from this pop property? And I have actually one last question, which is, I noticed that this um uh entity is named D L Urban Renewal LLC. And I wanted to know if, and I, I did read the financial agreement, but it was difficult for me to determine. Is this entity receiving a long-term tax exemption on both land and improvements? So those are my three questions. Thank you.
Um, last question. At this time, I will, I may make a motion to close portion, public portion of this meeting. To move. Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Costinick?
Yes. Now we're gonna try to answer some of the questions that was put forward and um as it pertains to a pilot, um, Terry, you want to talk about the pilot and um the, the pilot for Super Fresh and uh the eight point eight million that was for the developer that was discussed?
I did take good notes, Mayor. Um, and I'll do my best. I, I, you know, I'll try to, I think I can address some of the questions that multiple questions that were raised by members of the public. Where I can't, we will get you answers uh after the meeting. As mentioned earlier, this is an introduction. The public hearing will be at the next council meeting, so we have some time to get back to folks. And I, I should mention, I had intended to put the application up on the website and I invited to do that, but I will get to it this week. Um, so there was a question raised about Middlesex Borough, uh, the project there. I am not familiar with those details. So I don't have any uh answers. I, I don't even know who owns the property versus the, the grocer. I will tell you, in our case, uh, the Super Fresh operator does not own the property. Uh, but I, it is my understanding that they are the urban renewal entity that's been mentioned and that is who is applying for this now. So they are not the property owner. They are the operator of this facility. And the, the agreement goes away if there's no grocery store. So that's just a fundamental reality that's baked into our redevelopment plan by, by choice. Um, and um, so that's, that's an important consideration. Um, let me just go back to my notes, Mayor. Um, I don't have details on the New Brunswick one, but I'm, I'm happy to look into that a little bit, but we, my, my initial reaction is we are in a good place with our current uh arrangement and I have no reason to think that we won't have any. I don't know what, if any, there were issues there, but um right now, we don't have a reason to, to be concerned as far as that goes. Um, uh, so I think I answered that, the, the, so D L Urban Renewal, that is an entity held by Super Fresh. I, I agree with their corporate name this. Um, the question was asked about uh pilot funds um and a share with the schools, uh kind of like we did something that similar with, I, there you are. Uh, with, with the, with the Frederick project that was mentioned earlier. It's my understanding, and I will get you clarification, that because there's no residential component to this project, that the ASC, the annual service charge can't be split that way. That said, uh, another question that was asked, I think, by someone on the Zoom was whether or not the um there's the land tax versus the improvement. You cannot uh waive land taxes with a pilot. So basically, the way this shakes out is the uh, the urban rental entity, Super Fresh, will pay the greater of either the land tax or the ASC, depending on what that calculation looks like for that given year. Um, so hopefully that answers that, those two questions come to, come into the response there. Um, there was a question raised about the redevelopment area bond. It's a nonrecourse bond to the borough, so it's very limited risk. And it's very nominal in terms of its amount. Uh, it was a necessary tool to use to make the financial agreement that we have here. And anything beyond that, I'd have to refer to our attorney and you can feel free to email me and I will get you a more precise answer to that question. But I know that there is a good answer to that question. Um, and it is a two percent annual increase over a thirty-year period. Question was raised. Um, I, I will find out about the forecast spreadsheet, but I do know our attorneys did look at this very carefully on our behalf. I don't know if that was a tool that they needed to use in this situation, but I will raise that question with them. And it's, in terms of how much we can anticipate, it's, it's basically about fifty thousand a year based on current value of the property and we're discounting the improvements is essentially what we're doing to make this work. Um, so I think those are the kind of ones I'm comfortable getting back to. If, if there's a question that I didn't address directly now, I would be happy to follow up with anybody um after the meeting or um, and, and we'll make sure you get your questions answered. Mayor, that's, that's, I have, I have notes from some of the other speakers.
You know, and I wanted was to address the pilot program and Super Fresh. And I think you, I think all those questions were answered because I also took notes. Um, I'm gonna hop over to uh the question that was raised regarding the, by Mr. Sebo, the increase in water and the uh increase, he saw a thirty percent increase. Um, I can't address that, that now because we don't have his, I would suggest that Mr. Sebo, that you meet with Terry or someone in the water department and have them take a look at your bills and see what's going on there. I, 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 I can't address that. We can't address that from here. Uh, you said you receive a six thousand dollar bill. Without seeing that information, there's no way we can address it. But I would strongly suggest that if you give your information to Terry, she can follow with you. Uh, okay. And then um, another question was raised about uh information. We will try our best to um communicate as, as much as we can. Um, we all are painfully aware of that we just don't receive our, our information from the news or from a newspaper anymore, that there's various sources in where, which people get information. And I have met with some of the members that's gonna be appointed tonight to the Public Information Committee. And we are looking at various ways in which to communicate. As a matter of fact, one of the persons that I met with um, a tool that I use to communicate with Asian, Asian community here in town, talk about a bigger expansion of that tool. So yes, um, we're looking at various ways in which we can communicate with everyone. So that's been worked on. A question was raised regarding Oprah, that um the courts are being, I think it's uh, that's been worked out with the Assembly or Senate in Trenton. We're not involved in that process. We had no comments to add. And I think that brings us to closing of our public comments. And now we're gonna move on to ordinances that require first reading. But can you please report and to an immediate required first reading?
Ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-eighty-three, it is approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with D L Urban Renewal Grocery Store.
Motion to approve or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Costinick?
Yes.
Now we move on to the consent agenda. May I have a resolution, may I have a motion to adopt the following consent agenda items, twelve A to twelve O? Motion?
To move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, and I just quickly, I should have mentioned earlier that, that on the consent agenda, this is the implementation for the neighborhood preservation program. Um, we are looking actively for, for residents and business owners in the Woodbridge area to, to continue to be a part of the stakeholder committee um that has helped come up with this. So I would just encourage people, if they're interested, live in the area, have a business in the area um to, to, to let me know and be a part of it. But absolutely, that's a consent.
Councilman Costinick?
Yes.
Uh, now we move on to appointment, appointment to Public Information Committee, Lisa Nice and Peachy Wade. Arts Commission, Irina Rapida, motion to confirm?
To move. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Costinick?
Yes.
Okay. And now we move to the second, public participation. The speaker may speak on any topic. Um, we're subject to close at nine P M. Our administrator will announce when your first, when, will announce your first speaker, if there is one on Zoom. If anyone in the public wishes to speak, you may do so now.
Uh, Mary Forsberg, uh, Denison Street. Um, the whole question was not whether you were involved in uh passing that legislation. The led, the question about that was, um, in the past, you signed on to a, um, you sent a letter to the League of Municipal, Municipalities opposing prevailing wages. And um, I'm just curious if you are in favor of the changes.
Mayor, hi. I know you asked a question before and we've already responded to.
You didn't answer it.
Um, actually, she advised that there was no comment on it. There is no back and forth. Once the question has been answered. And if, if the, if the governing body says they're gonna get back to you on something, they're gonna get you back onto you with something. But this is not a form. If you have a pending question, please ask the question, but it cannot become an issue of dialogue or confrontation. It's already been asked and answered.
Actually, it hasn't been answered.
It has been, ma'am. If you have anything else, if there's anything else we'd like to hear your question, if not, then please have the next speaker on. Thank you.
The question that I asked before, with all due respect, I don't believe, was that, I think it was forgotten. And that was the question about whether, if the supermarket failed, whether there was any production that, what was the association of the pilot with the property? And with their, if whoever the succeeding owner might be, would it be an urban renewal entity and a, another pilot? So that was my question. But that didn't get answered. So still out there.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I have to correct the record here.
Henry, anyone on Zoom?
Hi, Diane Ray. Um, I just have to correct the record. It was not Super Fresh. It was Fresh Market in New Brunswick. So it was a different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I.
It's nice to have someone know that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got distracted. Uh, no hands up. Uh, oh, let's take it back. One hands up, Kieran Crowley. Please state your name and address for record, please.
Hello, Kieran Crowley, two eighteen Harrison Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so, um, I'd like to just repeat the request for some kind of budget analysis. to support the pilot program and the incentive for the developer. And I think about three previous members of the public have kind of asked the same thing. So I'd like to echo that. And I guess in addition, I'd also like to know which member of the council or, you know, entity is behind the analysis, so who, who is doing the analysis? And I ask that so it's not just left loosely that, oh, this will be a, you know, this will be a net positive for the town. I think it's important, is it the economic development under Councilman Hale? Or is it finance under Council President Hirsch? Or indeed, is it a member of staff within the borough? So that's my request. Thank you.
All right, that was the last hand up from home and we're, we're at three attendees.
Motion to close public comments?
To move.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonick?
Yes.
Terry, you're in the hot seat tonight. I'm going to ask you if you, the, the, Mr. Crowley that just called, would you be able to get a budget analysis for that?
Let me, I don't, I don't want to commit to a budget analysis, but I can cer, I can certainly get a response to that question.
Okay. And we'll get back to Mr. Crowley. And I had a question about the, in, in the event, which we hope not, that the supermarket fails, although they have a thirty-year lease. She wanted to delve into that. Can we, can you give some more information about where we are with, with Superfresh? Failure or no failure, although failure is not an option? And about any kind of bond that we may have and revenue allocation and a two percent abatement that was requested?
I don't, I can't get into everything on the spot here, but I, I hear, I heard you the second time a little more clearly. I, I think I understand. It's my understanding that this agreement is with this specific urban renewal entity. And I think if your question is, what if this particular operator fails, what would happen? Well, immediately there would be no more pilot or tax abatement on this property. But then what would happen next if it was another operator? I have to get you a better answer on that sequence of events. I don't know. Could someone assume that entity and then bring in a grocery store and continue with it? I believe that might be an opportunity, but I got to get you a better answer.
Because there is a transfer provision.
Point of order, we have, but the public portion is closed. You can't engage. This is an opportunity for the governing board to respond to your questions.
So I will, I, I think I understand your point and I will, I will work on it more succinctly.
Okay, I think those were the questions from members of the public. Second. May I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Are you in favor? Next meeting is scheduled for eight more seconds. Thank you all for coming on. Good night.